Are you, or is Brian, and are you, are you the, you're the one, you're the man tonight?
I'm on the controls. Yeah, we're ready. We're good to go.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Baxendale.
Present.
Ms. Shockley?
Present.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Muschak? He's here, but muted. And Ms. Peniston?
Here.
Sorry, I was, I have a new computer and I was having trouble. I apologize.
Okay, and Mr. Meglio?
I'm here.
Here.
Okay, you're of Quorum.
Okay. First on the agenda is the A24 DPW referral, Seer Hill turnaround easement in favor of the city. Report a recommended action. So we'll be giving us a report.
Sorry. So we have Paul Sotnick from DPW can give you a brief overview of what's being requested. And also, I believe Attorney Suchi is on for the applicant or developer, as you would in this case.
I read the thing, but I'm a bit confused as to what it is that we're doing. So summary, overview, whatever will be helpful.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Sotnick. I'm a senior civil engineer with Department of Public Works. And just to give you a recap to start from the beginning, prior to 1970, Seer Hill Road extended from Oakwood Avenue north to Velvet Hill Road. In approximately 1970, US Route 7 was extended north to Griss Mill Road. And the portion of Seer Hill Road between the north end of the currently existing Seer Hill Road and the south end of the currently existing North Seer Hill Road was terminated for US Route 7 right of way. When that was done, there was no cul-de-sac constructed at the termination point of the currently existing north end of Seer Hill Road. And I can bring up a map if you'd like me to share a map with you. I can to share it on the screen to make it easier to see what I'm talking about. But I'll wait for you to let me know when you want me to do that, and I'll continue with the description.
Well, whatever, Paul, whatever is helpful. If the map is helpful right now, then put it up.
Okay. Can I share my screen? And the host does disabled participant screen sharing.
Hold on one sec. Okay, you should be all set.
Can you guys see the map?
No.
No.
Yeah, it's coming up now. But I'm not sure if you're going to see it or not. Let me stop sharing and try and reshare it.
Is it the map, Steve, in our handout?
I wouldn't believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there you go. It's low. It's almost there. There you go.
Yeah, it's a little slow on the uptake, wasn't it? The network here at City Hall is running a little slow tonight. Seer Hill Road runs up, as I was talking about, all the way north to where Super 7 has gone through to Griss Mill Road. This is the area right in here where the end of the right of way was terminated. And at this point in time, Stone Realty LLC and Metaphlor obtained a site plan approval in 2018 and was modified in 2020 for the construction and use of occupancy of a 21,000 square foot innovation center on excess land acquired from the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation. The multimillion dollar center will provide space where artists, designers, and others can gather to collaborate, design and create mockups of new products for Metaphlor. Metaphlor is a Norwalk-based corporation, was a national leading provider of luxury vinyl floors. It has offices and warehouses and structures on the adjacent land which fronts on Oakwood Avenue. In addition, Stone Realty and Metaphlor received approvals for a 20-space off-street parking lot access from Seer Hill Road we were talking about, and this is the parking lot right here where I moved into cursor to provide parking for the innovation center. During the Department of Public Works' plan review process, Stone Realty talked with our department and agreed to grant the city of Norwalk a 2,877 square foot turnaround easement. The easement is a perpetual easement over the planning and zoning commission approved on-grade parking facility, and they've agreed to provide this at no cost to the city of Norwalk. This will provide a permitted turnaround area for city vehicles such as DPW maintenance vehicles like plow trucks. And that permitted turnaround area currently does not exist. So basically, this is to allow plow trucks and other maintenance vehicles to have a permitted turnaround area, and it will be at no cost to the city. And the applicant or developer is responsible for maintaining the area. There's basically no cost to the city, and it gives you a legally permitted area to turn around, which technically, right now, we do not have. That's basically it in a nutshell.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Hi, Paul.
Hi, Mike.
I was wondering if first responders were approached at all? And if a turnaround, you know, in the traditional sense, like a cul-de-sac, was considered? If it looked like it would fit actually for the turning radiuses, but you know, if there's an emergency? And I was just imagining an ambulance missing an address, and they needed to turn around, and then they have to do this tricky maneuver at the end, or a big fire truck. It just seems like it would be safer to have a traditional turnaround if you could do that with parking on the side. Was any of that investigated, or is this just us? The city making sure that we have this turnaround, because it seems like a step further may have been taken, or was it taken?
What we ended up doing is we talked with the Fire Marshal's Office and other emergency services, and they technically don't need any kind of an easement to go over on the property, because if they're going to private properties, they can just go on all the time. And they said that they really didn't need anything else. They were satisfied with what they had. But public works vehicles really have no place to turn around. So we didn't have the property and weren't looking to acquire it from the state of Connecticut for a full cul-de-sac. And this was a way to get it free of charge for the city for plow vehicles and maintenance vehicles such as that.
Thank you, Paul.
Question, Paul. Why would the current owners want to give up seven parking spaces?
They're not going to give them up. It's only that we would have the right to turn around and go in the driveway and then back out with the plow truck and pull down versus a normal circular cul-de-sac. And I can let Attorney Suchi answer the question as to why they would be willing to do it. And it was during the plan review process, we asked the question, and they agreed to it.
Okay. Just the only point is, at the moment, it looks as though your total area, which is meant to be clear, obviously eliminates seven parking spots, because if those seven parking spots are there, presumably the turnaround area is not available.
Is this basically the plow trucks would be pulling into this area and backing out?
Right.
Versus, and they have an easement to go on this area of property versus not having any easement to do it anywhere at all.
Okay. Thank you.
So if there's cars parked there, they really don't have to go all the way in. And when this easement was drawn, it was squared off, basically angled, and then pulled down through. If it was in this area right here, we could get away with that. But if they're willing to give it to the city at no cost, we were willing to take it. If there are no cars, it makes it even easier.
So Paul, what would you be doing if there was no easement?
I don't really know if you want the answer to that question. Technically, we were turning around on private property. Now I'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, just a curiosity thing. It's private property. Why would the, are you, the plow trucks going in to plow or just to turn around?
Right now, the plowing is all the responsibility of the developer. Our plow trucks would not be doing any of that, so that there wouldn't be any possibility of damaging anything. It's strictly so that they could turn around and go back out. And if you really want to, I'll answer your question. I don't want to be evasive. But technically, they were turning around in the Glen Rock condo without permission.
Or just to turn around and go back out, because right now, you're going to go in, but you're going to back out the trucks, is what you said, right?
They were going back in Glen Rock in this area here without permission, which is not something we really want to do. So when this came up, we said, hey, we've got an opportunity to resolve that issue by not having them go onto private property without permission. Then it would be this turnaround easement, and they can go in, not plow anything. It would be plowed by the developer, and we would just back out and come back down versus having a traditional cul-de-sac. If I was laying this out all over again 40, 50 years ago with DOT, we would have insisted that they put a full cul-de-sac in. But I can't answer why that was not done at that time. We're just trying to clean it up to bring it into compliance now, so that we have a legally permitted turnaround easement area without going on private property without permission.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Okay, I don't hear any. I don't have, I don't have any resolutions that came to me, so.
I can, Paul, if you can just stop your share and I'll bring the resolution up.
Okay.
I'll scroll down. You should be able to see.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get any, any resolutions at all, so. So I'm going to put for
Can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Good, thanks.
I'm going to put forth the resolution here to approve as stated here. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? Any nays? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, what we'll do is, well, we did not, obviously, put this on the Common Council last night. We will put it on the fourth, Common Council, fourth week of the month, the second Common Council meeting, and that will go there now that you've approved it.
Thank you, Paul. Be well.
Thank you. You too. It was good seeing everybody.
You too.
Take care.
Thank you. Bye, Paul.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the zoning commission referral. 2021 12R Planning and Zoning Propose Text Amendment to Article 101 Workforce Housing Regulations of the Building Zone Regulations. Report and Recommended Action. So Steve, you're taking us through a little bit of a presentation here, exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, so I'll pop it up on the screen and hopefully it works and we can go through.
And I'm offering you guys a virtual chocolate chip, okay?
You guys can see that right before I get going?
Yeah, we can see it. I can see it.
Yeah.
Okay. So in, in the good news is that's only five slides to go through, so there's not a lot of, lot of slides, but they're kind of packed full of information, so I figured I'll go as slowly or as quickly as you'd like. Just a quick
Could I ask a favor? Will you send this PowerPoint later?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm assuming, I don't think it's that big of a file size, so I should be able to send that out. So the city's workforce housing regulations were adopted in 1987. They kind of are meant to make sure the city complies with one of Connecticut general statutes, which is 8-30G. So what that statute does and says is if your municipality does not have 10% of its housing stock that's affordable at certain economic thresholds, then basically, you know, what can happen is developers can come in and kind of run amok, disregard your local zoning regulations. That's much more common in our neighboring municipalities, you know, the smaller towns that, but Norwalk, they have the, you may have seen in the past when they get 830G applications, and you know, usually the community in the area where they're proposed goes into an uproar, because what happens is they propose a lot higher density, sometimes taller buildings, a lot more buildings. And you know, it's a little, it's not in the, in the common theme of the area. So you know, usually it's a little bit disruptive force in the area. The, the regulations themselves are based on what's defined as state median income. The thresholds I show on the screen are the kind of the triggers, so that 10% of the units have to be at available to folks that with income of not exceeding 80% of the state median income. So the state median income as of 2020 was 99,780. 80% of that is 79,760. And 60% of that is 59,820. That just gives you a little bit of flavor of some of the numbers we're talking about. There's also some measures that HUD uses for different calculations. And I put one up there just for reference for the area median income, which looks at closer in our geography, because obviously, we're in a much wealthier area in comparison to the rest of the state. So the area median income for a family of four would be a little bit over $143,000. To give you an example of the rent someone would pay for a one-bedroom unit based on 60% state median income, it's about $1,100 per year. And those factor in utilities as well. That's, that's required as part of the calculation.
You said $1,100, you said $1,100 a year. It's a month.
Oh, sorry, Leonard, $1,100 a month. Yeah, that would be pretty cheap. Yeah. According to our last reporting, which was 2020, Norwalk has a little bit over 13% of their housing stock that meets the 830G requirement. And that translates to about, and excuse me, let me break that down a little bit differently. There's about 499, so about 500 units that are in the workforce housing program. There are additional units that are obviously as part of the housing authority projects that would also meet these requirements, but this is specific to the workforce housing programs. A couple of other things with the existing regulations. There are clauses in there for incentives for, in bonuses if people add additional workforce housing units. And also fee and loop. No one has ever taken advantage of either of these provisions, since those were enacted, which is kind of telling that obviously there's some issues with those, and at some point, they do need to get looked at. So why are we proposing some changes now? So right now, the existing regulations aren't equitable across all the zones that allow multifamily housing. So if you're in one area of the city, you may be playing by a different set of rules than somebody else is in other parts of the city. And there's also different triggers and thresholds based on how many units you're adding and whether you would be required to provide these workforce housing units or not. Previous studies that were looked at, and when we were doing rezoning, I would say in South Norwalk and also in the West Ave Wall Street area, we looked at where the school kids were coming from. And there's actually a higher percentage of kids that come from the smaller developments than the larger ones by percentage. Obviously, if you build a couple hundred of units, you're going to get several kids going to school from that address. But overall, the more schoolchildren are generated from smaller developments than larger ones. The workforce housing regulations are not meant to be a cure-all and the, you know, the the silver, the magic bullet, I guess, for all the city's affordable housing crisis. Obviously, the income levels that I showed on the previous slide and the rents that are there are not affordable to everyone. They're really meant to target the city's workforce. For example, you know, several members of my, my staff that are newer, they would fall under, you know, folks that would fit those income levels. So it's, it's, it's designed to help keep the workforce in the community where they're working. Something else to consider, there is legislation 8-30J, which requires every municipality to have an affordable housing plan. Norwalk has not ever done one. I'm not sure why. The next one is due in the fall of 2022. So I have staff working on an outline for how to put that together now. As we get into it more, there's probably a few questions we might need a little outside help with, but I think we're going to try to do a lot of that in-house based on the work that's already been done as part of the citywide plan, as part of our workforce housing regulations, and also in consultation with the housing authority, who's done a lot of different work in this area as well. Just to give you a little idea of what the impacts in, of this develop, excuse me, the changes to the regulation are. One significant one, which I've answered the most questions on from folks in the development community, are for those smaller developments. So if you're talking about something between three units and 10 units, that here's the fee, that's how it's kind of broken down, and I put a couple examples up of some recent projects. I believe the Bowton Street one is one you saw as part of a subdivision application a while ago. It's really not a hefty fee. It's $10 per $1,000 of construction value. So just looking at the first one, and they're all pretty similar. The cost breakdown for the construction itself, so we don't look at the soft costs that are involved. We don't look at the land costs to develop the property. It's just the construction. So 87 East Avenue was a six-unit redevelopment that was done. The cost of that was a little over $650,000, and their workforce fee would be a little more than $6,500. So that's a pretty small fee overall. It, I don't think it's going to impact anybody's bottom line. The idea is, is that, you know, it's a small fee, but there'll be probably numerous small fees, and those will get added up. That money gets put into a fund that's strictly used for affordable housing. And the intent is to help either like the housing authority or another affordable housing developer. You know, it can help with acquisition costs on property. It can help on soft costs, whether that's their engineering and their architecture. And it can, can provide a little bit of seed money to get some of these projects going.
Hey, Steve?
Yep.
Who managed, where does the money go and who manages it?
So that goes into a city account that's designated strictly for affordable housing developments. I think there's been three or four projects that have added money to that fund as part of some redevelopments in South Norwalk and probably also in the West Ave Wall Street corridor. That would have to get approved by council. It's a good point that we probably should firm up any kind of mechanism for approving that, whether a development is eligible or not. We haven't had to cross that bridge yet, but that's a, that's a fair point.
Well, I, I think you need to, I, I think we asked this question, or maybe I asked this question a while when this thing was churning around. So the money goes into a pool, right?
Yeah.
So if money, if somebody proposes, and who, who can propose? Is it on the city's side, or is it a developer looking to use that money?
It could be a private developer, as so long as, you know, obviously, it's got to go to projects as outlined in the regulation and are restricted in the fund. So somebody would have to be proposing affordable housing at the income thresholds outlined in the regulations. And, and they would go through the same process as anybody else submitting any kind of project for, you know, to the city. You know, they'd have to go to the commission, get approval, and then we would look at the, you know, the request for the funding as it came in, and see if it was, met the standards or not.
Who makes that decision? And if you tell me, it's not, it, so Common Council has a say on whether that money gets used or not. But let's say you can propose to take money out of there, a private developer can propose to take money out of there, or who, me? But who, where, where does it, does the, where does the request go to?
They would make the request to the city probably through our department, since we're the one that have kind of managing the fund and taking the funds in.
So are the funds listed under planning and zoning?
Under, yeah, so they're, they're not specifically in my, like, so the city has a software program called Munis, which is their accounting software. So it's one of the items that I can look at when I pull that up.
I know, but who, I know Munis, but who's got the finger on this account?
It, it's through planning and zoning. So anybody that was going to request that would first have to go through us to, to access that. And then we would, you know, evaluate it as it came in.
So Steve, who has signed off on the check?
Oh, at the end of the day, we'd have to go through council to get approval.
So the funds are just there for the developer. They're not helping the person who's renting the unit to offset rent?
Correct. That would be a whole different mechanism, probably through, you know, not, not through the planning and zoning department, probably out different agencies.
Isn't it the, it's a capital investment to promote development of more affordable housing? Isn't that the intent, Steve?
Yeah, it's, I, I think, you know, it's not going to, you know, even if, especially with the levels in these projects we're talking about. Yeah, I, I think like the typical, like, say, project we've seen, like with 100-unit multifamily development who've taken advantage of this regulation already, I think the fee is about $100,000. So, you know, it's going to take a while to accumulate significant funds where somebody could actually, you know, buy a piece of property and do something with it. I think it's, it's more to really kind of fill in the gaps and be kind of seed money for some of these projects.
Steve, could you tell us the balance on the account at the moment?
I don't know. Top of my head, I should have gotten that information before tonight, but I don't know. Top of my head. I think it's, I think it's probably under $300,000.
Okay. Can you confirm this matter of interest?
Yeah.
I love knowing where money is.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Steve, the percentage, was that based on a case study from another city or from maybe some best practices? Or just a kind of feeling that you?
Are you talking, this percent, the 10 per thousand, Mike, or some?
Yes, that, that's the person, yes, the 10%.
Yeah, so that's the, that fee there is based on when I was in New Canaan. That's the fee we established when we were, we put a similar regulation in. That regulation applied to all residential construction, single-family on up. So that, that was the fee schedule that we came up with.
And, and were you aware of, what, how many years were you in New Canaan, if you don't mind my asking you a personal question?
It's not personal at all. It's public record, I think.
Yeah.
I was there 11, I think that regulation was probably in effect for six or seven of those years, I'm guessing.
So did you see that money used for actual development of the 40 minutes?
Yeah, so if you go, so New Canaan was, you know, and obviously, you know, can, people can quibble with what the smaller towns are doing, but New Canaan was the first municipality in the state to enact that fee that was permitted under statute. And several projects have used that. The, New Canaan has a pretty active housing authority that's done several affordable housing projects, and they, that, you know, if you think about the kind of construction that New Canaan has, every house is like, you know, minimum of $800,000, but most of them over a million. So that fund, when there was heavy construction, accumulated several million dollars a year. So we would, you know, I say that the town would use that money towards housing authority projects, assisting with land acquisition, construction costs, soft costs, et cetera.
But it wouldn't be a developer tapping into that money, would it?
It could be, yeah, but there just weren't any buyers or any, anybody that was really interested in doing that. So the, the housing authority was pretty active through some state and federal programs, and they were the ones that tapped into it the most, which was fine for the town, because the town had, you know, trusted and good knowledge of what the housing authority was. And hopefully, I think that would be the same thing when Norwalk, when Norwalk's housing authority takes advantage of it.
I'm just having a, I don't know if it's a thing in my brain here, but a hard, not a hard time. I don't know. And I don't know if you guys are as well. So we collect money from a developer, from developers, and then we're using the money to help developers. That, doesn't that seem strange to anybody, or is it just me?
Well, it, it seems strange to me, Fran, and I just want to clarify something that Steve just said. Do you collect this fee from all developers or just people that are building or renovating workforce housing units?
No, so this would, let me jump ahead if I can. I can come back to this slide too. So these are, this, this slide here really highlights the three changes to the regulations that are there now. So most of that text even though a lot of it's in red, it's already existing. It's just reworded a little bit. So if you're building housing, if you're adding, our definitions for multifamily is three or more. So if you're building a development of three or more units, you're subject to the workforce housing regulations. So most people, if they're building three or four units, they don't want to, they don't want to have to designate one of those units as a workforce unit, because that means each month that they're going to collect less rent for that unit. So they will probably opt to pay the one-time fee. And as I indicated on the previous slide, it's it's not going to be a significant amount of money for that for that project, and it's a one-time fee. And then those units all rent at market rate. Anybody that gets may, you know, maybe if you're doing a nine-unit development, maybe you'd want to consider designating one of those units as workforce units, or maybe you'll just pay the fee. When you get to the point where you're building ten or more units, you have to designate a minimum of one of those units as a workforce unit. If you're building seventeen units, you're not going to build one point seven units. You're going to either build two affordable units, or you're going to build one unit and then pay a fee for that one unit. So that's going to be a pretty small check. But it goes into the larger pool. I'm not sure. Hopefully, that answers your question.
So Steve, this is Tamara. This is saying that if you build something three to nine, you are not required to have affordable housing. You pay a fee, and it's one time. If you build ten and up, you are mandated to have affordable housing and a fee if you decide not to uh, build an affordable housing unit?
You're almost.
Designate.
You're almost got. Yeah. So if you're doing three to nine units, you can you can put one of the units as a workforce unit. We won't want to stop you from doing that. You don't have to. If you if you, I I'm guessing most people will opt to pay the fee because it's a small fee and it's a one-time fee, and then all their units rent at market. If you are building, so the existing workforce housing regulations now, for some reason, they came in at twelve units. The other more recent reason is when you look at ten. But if you're under this proposal, if you're building ten or more units, at a minimum, you have to add one unit. So if you're adding, let's took another, get off that number. If you're building, say, a thirty-three unit development, at a minimum, you're going to have to designate three of those units as workforce units. Then you have the choice, because right now, if you did thirty-three, you'd have to round up to four. Under this regulation, you can stay at three and then pay the fee on the fourth unit, which will be a small fee. And then then you're only, you know, the rest of the units are market rate.
So then the developer can buy his or her way out of that other affordable housing unit.
The fractional.
One-time fee.
Correct.
Did they ever consider having an ongoing fee because he is, he or her is choosing not to build an affordable housing in order to increase this this funding? Because it a developer would probably want to not to build affordable housing and would choose to pay the fee.
Right. So I I would imagine you, I I mean, I don't know for certain if that's something that's permitted. I'm just thinking from a management point of view, how that would kind of be a a kind of a nightmare for staff to like be collecting that fee annually, just would be a lot of extra work. And and Tammy, I think there's a lot of pushback on that.
And Tammy, I could see your point. Steve, is there anywhere that that fee could be increased then so that you don't have to monitor it? And manage it with the tax assessors or anything else? Could we just increase that fee?
You you could propose, yeah. So this was the fee that we, you know, I came up with in in my for the reasons that, you know, for Mr. Muschak's question. You you know, you could always make the recommendation to the zoning commission, if you move it forward, to increase the fee per thousand. That's that's.
And that and that will be my, that will be my thought, because then New Canaan doesn't have that much workforce housing. We have more than that or more potential for that. So maybe uh, instead of comparing New Canaan, maybe that fee could be increased um, as a as a one-time to maybe set the standards that developers developers to have that in their thought when they're doing these developments.
Yeah, and just to clarify one thing, New Canaan doesn't have the set aside either. So they don't have, you're not required to provide workforce housing. They don't require that in any multifamily developments. That's why the fee is put in there.
Go ahead.
So I have, I don't want to take up too much of Tamara's time, so I'll let her just continue, but.
I I just, no, no, tha- thank you, Stephen, but I just, so with this, the the money that you're getting for from developers, because I'm sure a developer would rather pay a fee than have a a a an apartment under the market value. What is being done with that fund? Uh, that's what I wasn't clear. Because you were saying that it could go back to the developer.
No, so go ahead. Sorry.
No, I just want an explanation of what is, what is the fund going to be used for?
So let's just, you know, just forecast out in the future as, you know, projects develop. Say, there's a million dollars in that fund. And the housing authority is looking to redevelop one of their sites. But they're, you know, they're they're trying to get, they don't have the upfront cost to hire an engineer, an architect, and their traffic guy, and whomever else they need to bring on board. And or maybe they need another five hundred thousand dollars to bridge a loan. They could, they could request to get access to those funds to fill those needs. That that's one example of how it could be used.
I have problems. This is Tamara. I just have problems with that. I think if they are accepting that I'm going to pay penalty not to build an affordable, not to designate affordable housing, I don't feel they should have access to the fund that they have put and they have input in. I think that if this fund is going to be created or has been created, that it needs to be independent and that it should be for actions. They are paying the penalty not to have affordable housing. I think the fund should in some way be used to either for the benefit of affordable housing, either repair, uh, maintenance, but not for a developer to have that two-way entrance to, well, I'm going to give you it, and then I'm going to take out. So.
But I don't think it doesn't go back to the same developer necessarily. It's for a project that's dedicated to affordable housing, right? Is that the case, Steve?
Right. And also, keep in mind right now, if if somebody's building under that twelve-unit threshold, they don't have to provide any workforce housing or pay a fee right now.
You're going down to ten units now, Steve, right?
Yeah, I I don't know what the rationale was for twelve. Ten seems to just make more sense because the it's, you know, the workforce housing regulation is modeled after the Connecticut General Statute eight thirty G, which looks at ten percent of your housing stock. So it seems to me ten just seems a much more reasonable number.
I go for a penalty of five or a fee structure of five percent roughly. So it's worth something to us. Then it needs to go in the fund, and then somebody needs to define very carefully what that fund is.
And Brian, I was going along the lines of you too, because it sounds like the wit we're accumulating right now is not enough to really make a dent in promoting affordable housing. So I agree with you. There needs to be some understanding of what this fund has been able to generate. So I'm glad you asked the question of how much. And if we're really trying to get a fund that promotes and encourages affordable housing development, it needs to be enough significant number money that it's actually going to impact and incentivize. And probably not for this meeting, but Steve, it would be helpful to understand to the general parameters of what kinds of projects would qualify. Does it have to be a hundred percent affordable housing that's being built to do this? Can mixed use be done? I just be curious about what kind of developments have a right to be able to pull down those funds? And if we would have a goal of how much money we'd like to try to build up in that?
Thank you for saying that, Mary. I was going to get into that, and you and Brian just took the wind up my sails, which is perfect. I I I just love this. But the goal is what I was going to reach to with the dollar amount that we can at least set benchmarks for. It could be conservative numbers, but at least a a number in place based on the applications that we've had over the past ten years, from two thousand eight into two thousand eighteen into now, post-COVID. There is still construction being made, so I I think we still have a good track record with with the pending, the pending and and the preconstructions prior for multifamily houses.
Yeah, I I don't know if I'm going to be able to, I I mean, I can. We can go back and look at what was built and see what would have been applicable that, you know, it's work, but you know, it's something we can do. I don't know if I would say I have, I hadn't thought about a goal for the total a dollar amount that we should collect, because I don't know if that's something we could forecast anyway, just based on recessions and slowdowns in construction and so forth. And in keeping in mind that these small projects are going to not make a big dent. It's the larger projects that elect to take the lower affordability rate and and pay and take that fee and pay the fee, excuse me, and then that those projects add up more significantly, because then, you know, that you're talking about, you know, maybe it's a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a shot versus, you know, somebody paying five to ten thousand dollars.
And and Brian, to your point, Brian, I think we have a good trend from post-recession oh eight until eighteen, and then now I think there's a good trend of permits that we can look at that would that would show what we have done after the recession until now. What do you think, Brian?
Sounds good to me. I think a little bit of analysis and just also planning out what we think we should be doing. Obviously, the premium has got to go up, or the fee has got to go up, in my opinion. One percent is nothing, as Steve just said earlier. And we need some funds for basic affordable housing. And that's why it needs to be defined, as everybody else has said, very carefully into what that fund could be used for and how it should be used, and who signs off on it. Obviously, the house, our current housing authority is a, I would have thought a legitimate reason, a needs, but I don't know.
So just a couple of things. So the just the, this fund was put in place in two thousand nineteen, probably middle of the year, maybe two years ago now, I guess. Two thousand nineteen, when the South Norwalk TOD SSDD zoning was put into place, so that that was enacted then. So that's, you know, it's you know, less than two years in place. So that that's kind of will be the only benchmark or track record we have to go on for what's been added and why. Yeah, okay. No, I'm happy to take any other questions.
Yeah, Steve, Steve Kleppin.
Yeah.
What what's our action tonight? Can this be postponed, or what what do we need on this before I ask my?
So the public hearing for this is on May the first, I think it's May fifth or sixth, whenever the zoning commission meeting is.
All right, so we don't need to vote on this tonight, or do we need to vote on?
Yes, unless you're going to have a special meeting to reconsider it, but otherwise you you would need to take action tonight.
Well, my question is, you came up with that number on the fee from what New Canaan was doing, but what 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 do other cities or town have in place? Does this program exist anyplace else? And what are the fee, what are the fees associated with it?
Uh, there there are a couple of other communities. I don't know what the fees are off top of my head. I can find that out. I mean, so like, to your point, New Canaan is different than Norwalk because of the, just, you know, for myriad of reasons, but.
I mean, can, no, New Canaan has what? Nineteen thousand people or twenty thousand people or whatever? And their work and their their affordable housing is what? Two percent, three percent, even if that's that high or not? What I'm saying is, it's not based on what was being done in New Canaan, all due respect to you, is I I would I would want to see a what what are what's going on on the other one? You know, comparable to Norwalk, do they have this type of a pro, does this kind of program exist? And what is the uh, the fee? What what what's so, you know, we can sit here and say, well, it should be one percent, it should be five percent, should be higher, lower, or whatever. But what's the standard, I guess, is what I'm asking. Is there a standard?
Yeah, I I don't think there is one. Like, like I said, I can do a little more digging on if there's any other communities, what they're applying. Just a couple of things.
Steve, I can help you with that. With two towns I have in mind, West Hartford is one to look at just from a start, just based on its size.
Well, I mean, I can send an email out tomorrow and probably get, you know, how many other folks are, because there's a, there's a planner's list serve that we shoot questions off each other all the time, so it'd be a pretty quick response. Not, I don't think it's very many towns that are that do this program. I'll be honest, I don't think there are.
So is zoning, is zoning going to, we're sending this to zoning? And then there's a zone, does it have to go to council, or is it zoning the?
No, it's just a zone. It's an immense, so just to be clear, that this regulation in the fund is already on the books. The only change is just looking at the smaller developments. That's the like, that really the only the only significant change.
Now, you're also going from twelve to ten. And it used to be, it went, it went from twenty to twelve, and I don't remember now if you were there when it went. I was there when it went from twenty to twelve, and now it's going to ten units. And what the rationale, I don't remember the rationale at the time uh, why it went to twelve, but anyways.
This is, I mean, I, just a couple of things to reiterate what I said before, that that this workforce housing program and this the fee with this is not meant to solve all of the city's affordable housing issues. There's other, you know, that's why there's a housing authority, and that's why there's other programs available. This is simply meant to address one segment of the housing market. And that's it. The the fee is already on the books or, you know, as part of the regulations already, we're just looking at the three to nine units. And yes, I guess you could say three to twelve units, because right now that's where the the standard starts. So it's not, I I mean, I look at more as a tweak than it is anything. It's not a significant new policy.
But I think, but what's really needs to be tightened up, though, Steve, is is the process for this. I mean, can I go anywhere online at City Hall and, you know, look at this thing and and will give me the process of saying one, two, three, four, five. So if that doesn't exist, I think it needs to be put together on on when you're spending funds.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, we have to do the housing plan by fall of twenty-two, which is really not that far away. So that's something we can incorporate into that as well. So that's a fair point.
Yeah, we're we're April twenty twenty-one, though, not, you know, twenty twenty-two. This is an existing program. I mean, is there a procedure for this? Is there a process for this, like, you know, listed?
Do you mean in terms to access the funds or collect the funds?
For both, you know, for accessing or whatever. I'm saying, I'm looking at a regulation, it's on the books, you said. So is there i- is there a flow? You know, somebody says, show me the the path to this, or show me the what's, I can't think of the right word right now. But show me the, even if it's a page, whatever it is associated with this thing. Does that exist? And what the plan is?
No, not specifically, but if somebody had a project in mind that met those requirements, we would say, okay, so send, send, you know, like any other project, we would review it, say, what are you proposing? Evaluate whether it meets the criteria and then, you know, put in the request to access the funds and, you know, other bodies are going to have to weigh in too. It's not, it's not going to be my department just saying, okay, looks good. Here's here's two hundred thousand dollars, you know, it won't be that that kind of.
No, I'm saying is the the criteria exists. I'm I'm guess I'm what I'm looking at is some kind of a somebody comes in saying, I want to put a request in for this fund. So you give them, it's a written criteria. This is how you, this is what your proposal. This is what you have to submit. It comes to planning and zoning, and then it goes to uh, common council. I'm looking for a flow.
And if it doesn't, yeah, so to answer your question, that doesn't, it doesn't exist in writing, but if that's, you know, that's something we can develop pretty easily.
I I would recommend that we that it gets put in, put put in writing. That a process flow, whatever it is, procedure, whatever you want to call it, is attached to this, you know, when 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 money is involved, right?
Brian, I'd also suggest we add to that very clearly that the fee structure needs to be reviewed. One percent is nothing on some of these, especially when, bear in mind, they have to basically submit audit accounts for for the earnings of the people to make sure they're meeting a requirement. That's a fee, that's a cost for them. At the moment, one percent of a, is is peanuts, six thousand dollars. It's been probably two thousand dollars on the audit each year to make sure the individual property is a worked is occupied by people of the right wage, uh, income level. That's my half penny worth of, based on what Steve and Tamara said.
Uh, Steve, I have a question. You're focusing on sections two, A, B, C, but it looks like you also have deleted the regulations for workforce housing applicability. And also your revised your revised legislation stops at three C is four, five, six, seven to the end of the regulation. Is that still going to be included, or did you eliminate that? That's the bonus density. Or did you eliminate that? That's the bonus density um, location of workforce units. Is that still going to be part of the legislation? It's not included here in your revised legislation. It stops at.
Right, it's, there's no changes to those other sections that you just highlighted. Um, I can pull up, give me, I can hold on one second.
No, I mean, if, if they're still going to be there, I didn't see it in your revised, I didn't know whether you were also uh, eliminating those particular clauses as well.
No, that, that's another, that's another kind of big fish to fry, so to speak, so I'd, I'd rather leave that.
So they are still, so that's still law. So, but you have also eliminated the, it looks like these specific zones. That's in D one.
Yeah, so it's applicable to all zones now that allow multifamily housing.
That's, is, doesn't that follow the, excuse me, can I speak?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Right, that, that, i- isn't that more in keeping with fair housing law? Because didn't we violate that actually by having uh, specific zones where that could be used? Was, isn't that considered a violation of uh, of fair housing?
Yeah, so when the, we were looking at this, first looked at this in two thousand nineteen. And just to, you know, maybe not the planning commission, but the zoning commission was looking at similar changes then, and we just, we had a lot going on and it just kinda got tabled. But the, the, we did run this by with the housing officer, your housing officer, and, and. That was expressed at the time that there was concerns that, you know, was different standards for different parts of the city where one area was. You know, and, and if you think about it from an equity standpoint, why should one area get all the affordable housing? Why isn't the affordable housing spread throughout the city where you're allowing the multifamily house?
So conceptually. All of this is about in, increasing affordable housing. Increasing funding for affordable housing. And if we get lost in the weeds at this point, uh, on numbers that we can change later. Are we basically uh, s- slowing it down, but can we go back? If we said yes tonight and it went to the zoning commission and it went to the hearing, could we then still tweak? Uh, these numbers like one percent, make it five percent, or, or, you know, as an example. Uh, that, that's what I'm concerned about is that, how deep into the weeds do we wanna get if we can change this at any time?
So, yeah, I, I think from, based on what you just said and what I heard before, a lot of the um, items you mentioned. You know, in terms of the process and, and how someone would access the funds is kind of a separate issue than the regulation itself. It's, it's a good point that, you know, and I understand why you want there to be clarity. So if someone is actually looking to access those funds, they don't have to, they, you know, there's a process and mechanism in place. That's, that's pretty easy to, to clarify. The amount of the fee itself. Yeah, I, to your point, Mr. Shuck, I think, you know, you can, you can make, i- if you, like I said earlier, if you move forward with the resolution. You could also make a request to the zoning commission to uh, consider increasing that fee. And or it can be done as part of the zoning regulations update as well, so that, he wants that, it's, it's a regulation, so it's always subject to a second look down the road.
Can you answer a question, Steve? I think that Fran asked, which was um, who, who initiated this process of revising? And, and by the way, I just wanna say, it certainly is going in the right direction. So I think the hard questions are just because it's such an important issue, but I'm so glad to see it's going in the right direction. But um, who started the process of modifying this? Was it the, your department?
Yeah, so it was staff generated. Um, as I mentioned, when we, we first talked about this in two thousand nineteen, when we were doing the rezoning in South Norwalk. Um, you may recall that some of you were on the commission at that point in time, there was a joint hearing. We had in the community room with the zoning commission on the changes for the, around the rail station zone. And there was a big discussion about the affordable housing, because the, the initial proposal that came out was to leave everything at eighty percent state median income. But bump that up to twenty percent of the units within the development. There was a big pushback, obviously, from the development community, that twenty percent was too high. We had a consulting firm, RKG, run some analysis on how that would pencil out for the developers. And they, they thought it would be problematic install things. And then we also heard pretty um, interestingly from some affordable housing advocates that. Were less concerned about the percentage of affordable units, but on the actual affordability of those units. So they, they, that's when we came up with the, the two different, the two-tier approach of you can go sixty percent SMI under these criteria. Or eighty percent SMI under the other criteria.
Steve, this is Tamara. I'm not aware of how the procedures are in terms of uh, revising legislation. Does it come from your office or does it come from the zoning commission, which would ask your office? To look at a particular legislation and revise it. So I'm, I'm concerned about the process. And the other question I have is that the state is considering um, affordable housing. And why would we do this before the state enacts a legislation that includes affordable housing? Where we may have to come back and revise it in order to uh, be in accordance with the uh, state legislation.
So to, to answer your first question, the, the, so anybody can propose, technically, anybody can propose an amendment to the zoning regulations. Often they're initiated by um, staff, they can be initiated by the zoning commission, they can be initiated by your commission. And a lot of times they're initiated by private developers, because they wanna do something on the property and the existing. Regulations or indoor zoning boundaries restrict what they want to do. So then everybody has to evaluate whether what is being proposed is appropriate, does it make sense? Is it consistent with your citywide plan? So that, that's kind of the process in a nutshell. Um, to your second question, based on what I looked at from the regulations, this, these changes wouldn't have any impact. Or run counter to anything that's being proposed uh, at the state level. There are other regulations under consideration that would have different impacts. But this particular regulation, I don't think would be impacted or, or would run counter to anything being considered there.
Steve, are these type of projects things that developers would receive a tax incentive for?
No. Oh, I, what, can you clarify what you mean by these kind of developments?
Um, will be smaller ten apartment units versus a big hundred plus apartment developments?
Not, not if, you know, if somebody would, maybe I, just make sure I'm understanding your question. If somebody was proposing a market rate development, like uh, you saw the one not so long ago on East Wall Street. Where they were proposing to add, add that building to the rear of the existing um, old historic structure. So that would be a market rate development around, you know, it's a little bigger than ten units, but around that size. So that there's no um, subsidies or tax breaks or anything like along those lines for that. There are, like, you know, the infamous Wall Street Place project where they're looking to, they're utilizing state tax credits to develop affordable housing. That's a completely different animal than what we're talking about.
And, and it, these type, these size developments wouldn't turn into something like that?
Hmm, I don't see how.
Okay. Thank you.
And to be, may I ask a question, Fran?
Go ahead, sure.
All right, so in, in effect, you're adding this as a to, part of the toolbox for building affordable housing. Because the, you know, you mentioned tax credits, that's one. I have read that tax credits are actually diminishing. Uh, in their uh, availability uh, for affordable housing. I don't know where that is, maybe you know more about it than I do, but I heard that that tap is being turned off. Uh, or was, I think, uh, in the last couple of years. So it, is this, in effect, you're, this is another sort of funding source that you're trying to provide? For affordable housing, i- i- in a, it just, it, in very simple terms?
Yeah, and I think that's a, a good way to state it. I, I, again, I think that, you know, I don't think zoning is not the, the, the cure all. For affordable housing within a community, especially, you know, when you're talking about cities. I think we, you know, the, the programs in place now, I think, you know, we, we've taken pretty good pains to come up with something that the developers. Um, can live with, obviously, I'm sure if they didn't have to put any subsidized units in, they would be happy to collect more rent on each one of those units a month. But I think it, it's a fair, fair mix of things. Uh, you know, there, there's, I'm, I'm just thinking of a recent project the zoning commission is looking at now. That's involves taking down some older buildings, they're not necessarily historic structures, but they're older buildings. So everything, you know, those are available at, at market rate, they're privately owned. So somebody could knock those down and just build whatever they wanted to build within the regulations. At least with our workforce housing program, we ensure that there's some units that are more affordable to folks. You know, if you look at some of those numbers, like I, as I indicated, they're not cheap. I mean, like I said, some of my starting staff would qualify, and these are folks, you know, they're only a year or two out of college. They've got a bachelor's degree, they're just kinda starting out their careers. But otherwise, it, you know, it gives them, somebody like that, an opportunity to live in the community. Verse having to drive from Stratford or Shelton or wherever they are, then they're on the Merritt Parkway or ninety-five for forty-five minutes. Adding to the traffic load, causing pollution, being frustrated, um, something similar, we had conversations with um. Folks that had major office tenants up at Merritt Seven, and this is a couple of years ago. Where they were shifting back office staff up the line, because they, you know, their, their back office staff had to live outside of Fairfield County. Because they couldn't afford to live here. So they were driving fifty minutes for a job that paid fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year. And that's not bad starting salary, but it's not something that you can necessarily live on in any of the communities around here.
Steve, this is Tamara. And I'm looking at the numbers you sent us about the twenty twenty workforce housing income limits. And affordable housing in Norwalk is middle class. Basically, you're helping the middle class. Cause it's forty-one thousand, forty-four, fifty-three. The minimum wage in Connecticut is thirteen dollars an hour. Or fifteen dollars an hour, they're not making more than twenty-four thousand or thirty thousand dollars a year. So this is not helping the lower working class. And I know this is helping those who are trying to or just starting off. But affordable housing under these numbers, it's the mid, it's just helping the middle class. It's not really helping that target group of people who actually need help if you want them to stay and live in Norwalk.
So um, just to answer that, so you're right, you're, this, the workforce, there's two components to this, we should just make sure everybody's clear about. The workforce housing regulations themselves are not meant to hit those, um, you know, folks earning minimum wage. It's not designed um, for that program. I think that there are, that, that's where you have um, like, the, the housing authority comes in. Where there's more subsidized housing, where they can get vouchers and o- and other things, that, that's, I think there's programs. And social service mechanisms in place to, to assist those individuals. I don't think, so, as I said, I don't think zoning is meant to, to um, handle all those things. If you look at the language, um, and I'll pull it back up just so everybody can see it. Is that clear or do I need to blow that up for you? So if you look at um, number two, and you look at kind of the last two lines. So it's, it, it reads uh, to be used to construct, rehabilitate or repair affordable housing. For individuals or families of lower income levels, whose annual income does not exceed sixty percent of state median income. So that, that kind of answers another part of the question you were talking about, the funding. So that's where that fund goes to even that lower threshold. Whereas the workforce housing units are a higher income bracket, if that makes sense.
So are you saying that the fund that would be the penalty that you're going to impose on developers would go into a fund? And that fund would subsidize those who are in the lower income level?
It would be used by, say, you know, the easiest example is, say, the housing authority was looking at a project. Or there was somebody that's, there are affordable housing developers, that's what they specialize in. And if they were proposing a development that, where the income levels for the units that we were funding. Were lower than sixty percent of state median income, they can tap into those funds. And as part of that, those units are deed restricted, we, they have to provide us with an affordability plan, which is required now for all of the developments that provide workforce housing. And then, and somebody asked this before, and I think I provided, and maybe it was, it, a Ms. Penniston, an email she sent this afternoon. All, as I mentioned, all projects, so think about um, the um, trying to think of a more recent project you looked at. Something that you may have seen in South Norwalk, the, the Water Street project, for example, that was just built by F D Rich. So they have designated, I think it's about a hundred and fifty units, so they designate ten percent of those units as workforce units. They submit to us an affordable housing plan. And that plan has to indicate that they meet all the income thresholds, which units are deed restricted. They provide us a plan which shows where the units are. All the units have to be built to the same standard. So if I'm buying the penthouse unit, it's got the same fixtures as the affordable unit. So we, we, we check that uh, upon inspection. Annually, they have to provide us with a report that outlines the, you know, make sure that all those units are still uh, deed restricted. And also that the individuals that are renting those units don't exceed any of the income levels. And that's part of a broader reporting that we have to get up to the state of Connecticut every year. So we're just in the process now, we have a new senior planner on board, who has been tracking all this down for us, Dory Wilson used to do that. So we, we go through and we check with each one of these uh, property owners. We have a, a, a list of all the workforce housing units and the projects, contact information. We send them the annual reporting forms that they have to fill out, and then those get submitted back to us.
So Steve, is there a monitor on these housing apartments to prevent them for, and, from increasing the rent? On an annual basis, so that it goes out of the ability to pay by someone who, who comes under the affordable housing category? Can they?
Right.
Would you, is that your office that monitors that?
Correct, so they have to provide all that information and report that. Um, and I'm gonna butcher the clause a little bit. But we did put a clause in when we re, re-modified the regulations in two thousand nineteen. To look at, so like, say, if you're in between reporting periods and say, you say, you know, the idea with any of this kind of assisted uh. You know, cost of the housing is to kind of like get people up to the next level, so they're more self-sufficient. So say you were the benefit of a pay raise or a new job and you were in one of those affordable units, but then your income levels rose. You, you might not necessarily get kicked out of that unit because of that, but that would have to get rectified at some point. But you're not, you know, we're not gonna come and knock on the door and say, hey, you're out of compliance, uh, you know, you need to evict tenant A.
But on the other hand, as far as the owner, could he raise the rent? Your, your salary stays the same, could he raise the rent, which means you cannot, you can no longer afford that apartment?
So the, the, the numbers are based on the state median income level, so that level continues to rise, so the rents rise along with the income.
You know, that's, you know, that's, that, that tracking is very challenging, Steve. I don't know if your staff has been able to harness that, but over the past eight years, my uh, my inquiries on that have. Haven't gotten any results with that, with um, the developments and the number of units that they have rented for affordable or not affordable, but workplace, work, work housing. Haven't seen too much um, response back. I spoke to FairRent about it a few times and they sometimes track it. I believe um, that was the um, the, the, the department that was looking at these units. I never knew that uh, Dory was doing this on the planning, uh, on the planning and zoning, but that's, that's new to me.
I'll send you the um, I, I have a list, I can send you the list tomorrow.
That'd be great. If you just forward it to the group, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, we have a spreadsheet with all the um, the, all the developments, the number of units. And so, like I said, each, each application that comes in submits a plan that, you know.
Yeah.
And this is, it's a standard template, so they have to, everybody submitting the same form. But they also submit floor plans, and on the floor plans, they show us which units are affordable units, and we, we, we inspect them.
And these developers talk to FairRent or they speak to your department?
No, we, we just do the workforce housing regulations, that's it. So.
Okay, just the regulations, but the monitoring comes from FairRent, correct? I was gonna make sure Tamara has the proper answer, no?
No, 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 so the, ju- just so I'm clear, our department, planning and zoning, only looks at the workforce housing units that are part of this program. We don't get involved with any other units that are any other kind of deed restricted unit by the housing authority or any other uh, entity in the city.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a suggestion, because I'm really glad that we're going to, that you all are starting to undertake a housing plan. And clearly, this is a complicated. This is a complicated issue. I appreciate with this resolution, you're trying to go in the right direction for. Using a mechanism that is only one tool and not a major tool. But it is an important tool. I like Brian's suggestion of raising it. But I think that um, given how much is involved with promoting affordable housing development and that we're going to have to have a plan in a year. Maybe we can figure out a way that um, we can have some conversations to understand what the tools are in the toolbox. But since this is only one tool of many, uh, I'd like to suggest that maybe we go ahead and. Approve with your suggesting with the amendment that Brian was suggesting of raising the rate. But I do, clearly this commission has a lot of interest in both workforce and affordable housing, and I think we're all concerned about it with. Rents being such a big chunk of everybody's income. So I think there are bigger issues and um, are needing to have better understanding of what the mechanisms. Or that we would have some authority over or. Cause we would approve the, the affordable housing plan, right?
So yeah, that's gotta get, I, I'd have to. I don't want to quote you on this incorrectly. I have to look at the statute again to see. What the approval mechanism is of the city for that. I, I, I'm surprised that we haven't. Done one before and I, that, that's kind of the same. I think it has similar language, like if your um. P O C D is not up to date, that technically the, the state can withhold discretionary funding from you on that kind of thing. I, I think. In talking with Laura. Uh, who I, Kenny, who's the new senior planner, we, we, we can definitely put together something that complies with the statute, but I think. One thing we talked about, which I don't think the two of us are going to be able to answer, which takes a lot more. Um, a lot more people at the table is a much broader discussion is what is, what, what, what does the city actually need in terms of housing and, and, and for different income levels and why? That, that's a tougher question to answer. We may need to bring in a little. Outside assistance on that I'll think about for the next um, bunch of cycle.
Cause I'm just, I'm, I'm with Mike that he was just sort of saying, we're not going to solve all these problems. It's one tool. I like that we're building more, more, up more income and I'd love for us to revisit it. And since it seems like. We as a planning commission could even raise the issue. We move this along and if we went, we could revisit it is what you're saying. So I think the zoning commission is going to need some kind of input. I don't think we should not say something or. Not have some commentary going back to them. And I'm sorry, I'll hush. I'm talking too much.
Mary, I agree with you, but I would like to see a specific number. Five percent, just something, just to give something to the zoning commission, saying that we would like to see an increase. They may not take it as seriously as we are. So I think we need to give them something to work with, especially if we don't see this again. It does take time to revise regulation. So I think that maybe, and I, and I'll leave it. There has to be a penalty where. Money is going into the fund. And that uh, it, it. It, that the developer will take notice. So.
I'm not about um, I'm not comfortable, uh, cause I don't have the to give. Specific number. I would like to go forward with a recommendation to zoning. That that number be raised, be looked at and be raised. Uh, I don't know if five percent is the right number, if three percent is the right number or ten percent. There's no basis to. To put a direct number. So I'm not. Myself, I'm not.
I think five percent would be a good start, Fran.
I, I don't have any basis to say five percent. If uh, some, somebody asks me to um, how do we come up with the five percent? It's a number out of the air right now.
Well, I think.
I'm okay with five percent.
We could talk about the reason why the five percent.
That is a good number.
We.
Why is that, why is that good number?
I'll tell you, it's based on the applications per year from two thousand eight. This was after the recession. Construction has been significantly reduced. Up until now, things have increased. We can use it as a template and look back at what the permits were done. Since we never increased this for at least fifteen years. Am I correct, Steve Clippin?
This came up last year. Steve said it was put in place, right? Oh, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Well, it was put in for one percent, correct?
Yeah, 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 that's.
Prior to that, there was no fee, correct or incorrect?
Correct.
Okay, so based on that timeframe, I think five percent is a good. Percentage to start from. That's just me. I'm just talking from what I think. The group and your thoughts, it's. Separate. I'm just thinking five percent. So I'm just wasting my thought on that for the record.
So to, I have a suggestion to for, because of Fran's concern. I understand she wants something to compare it against. Steve said he could ask other towns what they have. We could make the recommendation and uh, if he could provide some data, if what might be in other towns, at least it'd be something to gauge it against.
Well, I mean, just because he has a lot on his plate and the staff does, I thought we could just, you know, just help with that.
I was just saying, we could do it as a target, which could be then based on. Information that Steve could provide the zoning commission later. I was just trying to give him. Some leeway, but I think there's the sentiment it should go up. I just was trying to get a functional way to. Get a suggestion that Steve might feel comfortable. Answering.
I mean, the, the public hearing is when Steve Clippin is what, May something or other, who said?
Yeah, the first week, it first Thursday in May. I mean, it's easy for, I mean, just looking at the, the slide I have up on the screen now. I mean, that's. That's what the ten per thousand equates to. So it's easy to. Change the um, change the formula to show here's what it would be at. Twenty per thousand or thirty per thousand, whatever the, you know, the number was. And then it's. Very simple for me to shoot out an email to. My colleagues to say for all the communities have enacted similar regulation, what are you using for your valuation? And then say, I can, it's easy to provide that to the zoning commission. If, and if you're. Inclined to say, you know, whether you say it should be um, five percent. Or you say you just want it increased because you think the proposed ten per thousand is too low. That gives them some benchmarks to enact something or, or at least have the discussion. And then wherever it shakes out at the, at the final vote. Then it, you know, excuse me, we're having the, the zoning regulate, regulation rewrite is starting now, so it will um. You know, it'll happen. You can have that conversation again and evaluate it another year and a half into it. You can say, you know what, we, we enacted this regulation. We only collected uh, a hundred thousand dollars. It's not really going to amount to anything. We need to increase it and we think it's appropriate because of X, Y, and Z.
So Steve, can we do anything? Cause our next meeting is done till um.
Yeah, your meeting is after their meeting.
Yeah, May twelfth. So. If the resolution and, and I'm supporting a resolution that says that zoning commission has. We want them to go higher. But in the meantime, between tonight's resolution and the public hearing. You do your research. Can we? Do, can you, like, if you sent us emails, can we do any activity? By email, meaning.
No.
I researched it. The answer is no.
No, I can, I can pass on information to you to say, please take a look at this or I found this information. But there can't be any um. Commissioner to commissioner communication. You could always email me with questions or I can have back and forth with individuals. But we can't get, you can't have correspondence as a group. You know, you're just.
No, no, what I meant was as a formal. Not, nothing outside of the bounds. I know what the bounds are. We can't do this stuff by email and stuff. What I'm saying is. We. Forget it's, it, that doesn't. So I'm willing to have another. If you come up with a number and says, okay, I'm going to recommend to zoning. Um. Five percent or ten percent or three percent based on. What your research is or whatever it is, right? I mean. I'm. I am willing to put forth the resolution to zoning. To increase that number. Okay? So. That goes for, I'd say that goes for, then you do your research and stuff and you're going to have a number in mind. That you're going to propose to the zoning commission for their meeting? Or not?
Yeah, I can give them options. I, I, like I said, I, it's easy to do the math. So. One, whatever, you know, I could give them, you know, the, I could, if you wanted to keep it the simplest approach and you can tell me if you'd rather do something different. Um. That you could say you would like to, you know, you feel the fee should be increased. That, that's pretty generic language. Then I could propose to them. Here is, here is what it looks like at five percent, ten percent, twenty percent, whatever. And then um, based in the research that we've conducted, the, these um. These communities also um. Are, will collect a fee under this statutory section and their fee is this. And then the zoning commission can say, all right, that uh, we feel this is. Equitable. And keep in mind, the other part of this is that, that, you know, there will be a public hearing. The zoning commission has to have because there's an amendment to the regulations. And then I'm sure there's going to be folks that come out and uh, have an opinion on this. I already know there are several that. I've talked to a couple of them. When I ran the numbers with them, they were like, well, it's, that's not so bad. I'm happy to do that. A couple others are, I'm sure are going to have concerns.
Okay, so uh, also just to clarify, when an eight twenty four comes to us from zoning. We can um, yea, nay, or in between uh, zoning can take our recommendation or not take our recommendation. Right?
Well, if you voted in the negative. Or if like, because your action is, your action is making a determination of whether. A proposed amendment is consistent with the citywide plan. So if you said. Nay to that, then the uh, zoning commission would have to uh, by two thirds, I are a super majority act to look at it.
It's a super, it's a super majority, super majority.
Majority.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Um.
So what are we voting on tonight? Because I don't agree with how it's worded as it stands. So are we voting on this as it stands with a condition? Going to zoning or are we voting on or is it going to be changed? I'm, I'm. I'm not willing, yes.
So what you had talked about, this, this was the resolution that was sent out um, related to the amendment as it's currently drafted. What I. And I know you hadn't settled on any final language yet. But what I think you talked about was. What, you know, what I would recommend, if that's the right, you wanted to go. Was to add another clause here. And then indicate that you request that the zoning commission um. Increase the fee. And then, then, then it's just a question of whether you had a specific. Uh, value in mind or just increase it in general.
Well, Steve, aren't we going to say, as Fran suggested? We, we're definitely recommending it should be an increase, but you're going to look for and investigate. Uh, benchmarks elsewhere to come up with recommendations.
Yeah, I'll, I will do that regardless, but I don't know if you want to have something more specific in your resolution.
What I want to put forth.
I'd like to have one, one to five percent, sorry.
Well, I. I'm not for a specific number because I see that as a uh. Uh. I, I'm, I'm not for a specific number. I'm, I'm for a putting. I'm going to put forth the resolution that zoning commission increase. You know, um, increase the proposed fee. And Steve, by that time is going to have recommendation for zoning. This is what five percent looks like. This is what seven percent looks like or whatever. He comes up with, with his summary number. So, because I cannot explain myself. Somebody asked me, how did you come up with five percent? And I, I like to have data. I like to have backup and I like to. So to me saying, and we need, we were recommending. That the, I'm trying to read here what the increase of proposed fee based on.
I'm, I'm trying to do it on my head quick, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, in order, in order to, yeah, you're going to have recommendations. Of the benchmarks, right? And that you're going to recommend uh. The zoning. What those numbers are. And then you're going to have a public hearing. And people will comment on whatever your recommendation is. And whatever.
Fran, I have a, Fran, I have a question for that. Um, how did we, how did staff come up with the one percent in the first place?
That was based off on what um, I had enacted when I was in um, New Canaan.
So basically, it's a very easy calculation from the property uh, owners, developers' point of view is discounted, discounted cash flow. Versus the income they're going to get and the audit fees they've got to have every year. So I mean, five percent may not be right. But it is a mathematical calculation which you can base your judgment on. And basically, Steve should be able to, one, find out what the benchmarks are. And two, anybody can do that discounted cash flow against the normal rental. That they would be giving up. Or gaining by giving off this fee, whether it's one percent, two and a half percent or five percent. And again, the numbers we saw earlier with the example of six thousand two hundred. And whatever his penalty would, upon five percent would have been a thirty, two thousand five hundred, six hundred dollar type penalty. That can be seen if it's discounts against the income flow. Et cetera, that they would normally get. Does it make sense? Does it make economic sense for the, for the proper, proper, sorry, the property developer? Um. And or does it make sense for what we can get? To still basically invest in future developments. So it's pretty mathematical.
Yeah, my, my, my experience with not just this, but in other. Kind of avenues when you're looking to. Work with developers on getting things that you want for the community. I, there's that balancing act of. You know, they obviously have a bottom line for their, what they want for profit, but they're, they're willing to play ball on, you know, if something is reasonable. And I think, you know, some of the other processes we put in place. When we did the rezoning in South Norwalk and West Ave Wall Street. Was to make the application process on some of their projects simpler, so they didn't necessarily have to. Go for a public hearing each time, wasn't always a special permit application. So we tried to. You know, get, get some things that we thought would help the city, but at the same time not. Put every burden possible on that.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, even two percent is effectively doubling. The one percent, right? So even if two percent sounds like a low number. But I did like the five percent that Steve uh, recommended, but I'm okay with just putting language in there. Uh, about an increase. On that number. And this is uh, you know, our starting point. Is zero tonight before these changes or, you know, it's the existing condition. So. All of this is positive. I don't see any downside. To moving this forward tonight. Uh.
Well, I, I see, I, I see one. I think this question is for Steve Clippin. I, I think the group needs to. Have a basic, very basic idea of how these developers construct their soft and hard costs for their projects that. You know, we're, we're on a body talking about developers in real estate. You know, we need, they need to have a template of. What some of these soft costs are and half, hard costs are so they can get an idea of how these developers are making. And breaking these uh, projects and these opportunities. That might help them. Uh, it might help us, that the team, the staff, the commission to see. You know, what? What the, what the economic advantage is and disadvantages are rather than just throwing out. Numbers. I put my number in for a reason, but that's just me based on my experience, but maybe my fellow commissioners don't have that. Uh. Foundation um, to, to think about that rather than making recommendations. So Steve, is there a way that there could be some kind of basic? Concept or thought? Or is this just for our own individual researchers and experiences? Cause we, we're on a body. Um. That represents the public and the planning process for the city, so.
Um, if. If I understood, and maybe I didn't understand your, your question, but so when someone submits. Their permit for whatever the project is, that, you know, the zoning. Zoning, planning and zoning has a, a fee schedule. That's, you know, and so does the building department. So our fee schedule is completely different than the building department, but. Building department also looks at construction value. And so they have formulas that they can apply. So they know if, if somebody's building X number of um. Square feet of a certain type of development. Um, they know what the construction value is based on, uh, and they have a template and sheets that they apply to those things. Whereas um. So, so if somebody comes in with a really, you know, and this happens a lot, somebody will, will lowball their project. So then they pay a smaller fee. But then the, the building inspectors, when they're issuing their permits, they look at that and say, wait a minute, we, this number's way off here. And then they'll. Go back and forth and then come up with the final um, fee that, that gets charged. See, and I don't know if that was your question.
No, I already know that already, but I'm saying for the, for the commission themselves, uh, this number that we're looking at, this percentage or a number. You know, and we have to put our mind. In the thought on the process of these developers when they're positioning the, the city for a development. And, you know, the economic advantage and disadvantages. So as we talk about these numbers, when you're going back to your research. Those questions with the building department and your own experiences should come into play.
This Tamara, I feel very rushed. Because it has changed from what we initially started off. When we, when we began the meeting, a lot of information is going back and forth. This is not my area, so it's new to me. Um, I'd like to see what other towns are doing in terms of this. And I feel I need to make a decision and then it's going to be pushed to zoning. But. Since this is a concern that we as a commission have raised, I would like it to come back to us with the information. So that we can make us, make a informed decision instead of feeling so rushed. So I agree with Fran on that. So my question is, once you do your, your team does their research. Can we come back as a group for fifteen minutes? can we come back as a group for fifteen minutes? Once we review the information and then vote on the resolution? Because right now, I, I just feel very rushed and I don't know, and I need to study it more.
I think the answer is no, but I'll let Steve Kleppen answer because zoning is their meeting.
But their meeting is in the first week of May. We can't meet next week for fifteen minutes after you have submitted us the documentation so that we can review it?
Yeah, you, you can, you can have a special meeting and just put this item on the agenda and then so you can, you can, you can, you can, you can reevaluate it at that point. You just have to get that meeting done and get the memo to the zoning commission before their public hearing, which I said is, it's the fifth or the sixth, whatever that first Thursday. So that, that's entirely up to you on, on the, on whether you want to have another meeting. Just keep in mind, and we had this conversation before you, that whether you think it's good, bad, or indifferent, the planning commission's role in, in these kind of items is just looking at consistency with the citywide plan. It's not to necessarily critique. I know that's what happens as part of the process, but and you ask questions, but it's not to actually write the policy. I mean.
But it's not, we'll just rubber stamp everything either. When we make it, when we are making a recommendation, we need to have the information, all the information in order to make a recommendation on behalf of the city who we represent. Shouldn't just rubber stamp everything that comes before us. That's why I'm saying I don't feel I have enough information to make a recommendation. I'm not in agreement with what is before me now, but in order to make a recommendation, I need more information.
So Tamara, you're, you're looking, our role is limited in a sense. We're not here to, and I'll let Steve explain better, but you're looking to what? Change the text, change the that.
But that's what we're talking about, changing the text.
Yeah, but we've had this text though for a while to look at them, right? So, yeah, and unless I missed it, I didn't see anything from anybody on the commission saying change this to this or this to that. So we had a conversation tonight. I, I personally don't, don't think that rehashing this again and another meeting, I'm okay with having another, but rehashing it, we're going to be at the same place because we're recommending to the zoning commission whether, the big thing is on the fee, increase the fee. We're going to ten units versus, you know, the twelve, right? Those are the, there's a couple of basic things, right? And, and the language, I'm not looking to change anything right now. I don't, I don't see anything that jumps off the page at me, right? So, and I don't know about the rest of the group, how you feel. So tonight, I'm, I want to put forth the resolution that was updated with Steve to the zoning commission to look at the increase in fee. Steve is going to do some research, statistics or whatever, and come up. So by the time the zoning commission and they have a public hearing, these are hard dates that, you know, can be changed, whatever, will have recommend, recommendation, whether it's one to five percent is this, five to ten is this, or whatever Steve comes up with, with his research.
I don't think that being a resolution? Because we don't see this again, right? Once we finish dealing with this tonight, it's done. It goes up to zoning and we have no more voice in this. Is that correct?
When you say in this and what are you talking?
And this, the resolution that he has on the screen. Once we make a vote, because that's what we're voting on. Once we make a vote on this, that's it. We're done. Where there, there's.
We're done with this eight twenty-four. Now Steve did bring up, you know, the, the regs are being changed, right? And planning commission can certainly pick whatever the issue is and bring it up again, right? If things don't go, let's say, and Steve jump in, right? I mean, so, but, but to your point, yes, this is the resolution. We're sending it forward. So, and the thing is, we, if we don't have the votes, then, eh, which I always hate to do, that we, there's no recommendation to zoning, right? See, they can take our recommendation, accept it, ignore it and make their own. But at least we have a recommendation. We've had in the past where there's no, no concession, consensus on the vote. So no, no majority. So the, when they open up the zoning commission, I mean, it say there is no recommendation from the planning commission, right? So many different ways. So I don't know how this is going to shake out in the vote, but I want to put forth the resolution that the, let's see, put up here, be a further resolve that the planning commission requested the zoning commission increase the proposed fee based on research provided by staff in order to make a more meaningful impact for the Affordable Housing Fund.
That's so general.
Specifics though, I, I said, I don't have.
This, I think, I think it's a start. I understand your sentiment. I understand what Fran's trying to do. And I think I, I'd like for us to think about this, that let's just keep pushing on the spirit of the issue and work with the tools that we really have. I, I, I'd like to suggest that we go with Fran's recommendation of a resolution. And I'm feeling like we're going to have many opportunities in the next year. If we work with Fran and the, and Steve, that we can revisit learning a little bit more about what the tools are to address some of our concerns about affordable and workforce housing. And I feel like we need to learn more and we're not going to resolve it between now and the open hearing. So I feel like at least by communicating this, we're giving a message that we really want to make sure that we're being more thoughtful about these regulations, about what kind of monies that they produce to promote affordable housing. And so it's not perfect, but at least we're starting to chip away. It's something that needs to be worked on. So I would recommend that we go with Fran's recommend, recommendation. And Fran, if you want to put forth.
So I'm putting.
If you're putting with a motion, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to second it.
Can I add one comment if, before you take a vote? I, I mean.
Go ahead.
Just, just looking at it from my perspective, I don't see, I, I mean, I don't see a downside to this at all from, you know, an approval standpoint. I could see where there, you know, if you're a developer, you may not want to pay this fee, or you may not want to be subject to the workforce housing regulations. If, if the kind of projects that you typically build were, didn't fall under the requirements of the workforce housing, I could see there'll be a few people who don't like that. Obviously, anything new rules or new fees are, are never something anybody wants to see. But I don't see a downside from a policy standpoint to moving it forward. And to your points, you know, to Ms. Peniston's point, there, there's going to be other bites at the apple. And if during the zoning review process, where, you know, you're looking at this to say, hey, what, how, what's been the impact of the, the new fees since been enacted? What's been the, the, what you've heard, what's been the impact? We, it's easy to pull that information together and reevaluate.
So Fran has made a motion and I think Mary has seconded it.
Well, I'm going to make it formal. I'm putting forth the, the, the motion to approve with the amendment that Steve put in, that he's highlighting right now to move forward to the zoning commission. Do I have a second?
No, Fran, I'm sorry. I've been trying to cut in. And that's okay. I just haven't been quick on the release of the microphone. Steve Kleppen, could you please just scroll up a little bit more on this screen that's on now, that talks about the study? Expand, thank you. Right, stop. Expand the workforce housing options, including conducting a citywide housing study and reviewing the existing workforce housing regulations to allow more employees to live in Norwalk, et cetera. I think it's important that the city learn from either what it has done right or what it hasn't done right. And I don't know if the study is going to be the end all answer. We do a lot of studies. But I think there might not be necessarily enough information for us to make a decision here. But it is also, like you say, one bite of the bigger apple. You want to think about what the developers are doing, what residents need. So I, you know, I think it's tricky to move this forward because I don't really think the city in general understands its overall housing needs. Do we have the right amount of rentals? And we keep talking about rentals. I'm very concerned that there have been no new condominiums built in the city of Norwalk in years. And I've been told, oh, because the banks aren't lending for condominiums. Well, for somebody that's earning sixty or seventy thousand dollars a year can buy a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar condominium. And that's a different category of workers than those that are looking at the lower rentals. But the city needs to look at this in a broad picture, not just this one thing. And I don't see that the fee is going to make a difference one way or the other, except for some developers are going to say, fine, I'm not going to develop it. And they'll move on to something else, but we need to give them direction. Should this be rental? Should it be condominiums, you know?
Yeah, we can't control that unfortunately. I mean, there's no, there's no mechanism to tell someone whether they have to have rental housing or ownership housing.
But perhaps, perhaps this study will give some indication of that. And then we would be making a more intelligent recommendation to a developer. We have, you know, you can say, hey, we have, how do we know how many people want to rent other than word of mouth?
But we can't, we, when, so we, the zoning regulations as they stand, regardless of the zone, if they allow multifamily housing, they allow housing at whatever the density for the zone supports. So you can't tell somebody or require somebody that they have to have ownership housing versus rentals. That's, that's a business decision that they're making based on their understanding of the market.
I, I, this is Tamara. I agree with you completely, Tammy, in terms of the need for Norwalk to look to home ownership as opposed to just focusing on rentals. And that's the bigger picture. And that's where a study needs to be done because other towns are doing it. And homeownership is strengthens a town, it strengthens a community as opposed to rentals. So I agree that it, that a study needs to be done about the big picture. Because I think sometimes we get so bogged down with the little elements that we don't see the big picture for what's in the best interest of Norwalk. So I, I agree with you completely on that.
We all agree on that, but what, what has that got to do with this particular resolution?
Because she pointed out that there should be a, number one, be it further resolved, number one, conducting a citywide, I can't see it all, a citywide housing study. I think that's referring that to, right, Tammy?
Yes, correct.
That's what we need.
And that's what she's supporting. And I'm just saying that I support that as well, that we need
So do I.
bigger picture for Norwalk. And if that is included, I, if that's included in the resolution, then that's something I just strongly support.
So I strongly support it, Tamara. It's in their resolution. That's the, that's the key thing. We're going to have a, a, a planning study. And it's going to be available by twenty twenty-two, according to Steve, I think.
Correct, yes.
Which I agree with you, we do need to.
No, I agree too, which is why I'm saying this is a good start, but it's just a small piece of the puzzle. And I feel like we should just go ahead. I don't want us not to make a comment and going to the zoning commission. And I feel like I'd rather that we say, yes, this is going in the right direction. We're going to have plenty of other opportunities to even dig deeper. So I'd like to send a positive message. Yes, let's do better work on investing in all different types of housing and the right kind of housing that Norwalk needs. And we have ways to revisit this. So I'd like to say, yes, we want to work towards this. Let's push it forward. That's the spirit in which I'm taking it.
Same here, Mary.
And, and I concur with that. This is a, this is, like I said earlier, this is in all positive for more affordable housing. There's nothing, there, there's nothing negative here that we would be voting on. We'd be voting on basically going in the right direction in terms of increasing affordable housing. And again, as I said earlier, if we get down in the weeds, we can nitpick over certain little details in this language. But the responsibility of the commission tonight is to say this fits the overall P O C D requirements for increasing affordable housing. Pass this along with the resolution amendment to increase the number from one percent. I agree with all of that. So I'm, I'm going to support this.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to put forth the resolu- resolution as it, we see it on the screen here to move to the zoning commission. So I'm putting forth that we accept the resolution as we see it on the screen here. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, do we need to go by roll call or is there anybody opposed?
Honestly, Fran, I would like to abstain.
You want to do a roll call? It's probably the easiest thing.
Yeah, do the roll call.
Okay, I'm just going to go by how everybody's appearing on my screen. Mr. Moushak, this will be voting in favor of the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Peniston?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson? Steve, are you frozen or very?
No, I'm not. I'm just thinking.
So come back, come back to Steve then.
Okay, Ms. Langalles?
I abstain.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
Ms. Shockley?
Yes.
And Ms. DeMiglio, and I'll do Mr. Ferguson last.
Yes.
And Mr. Ferguson? Final jeopardy?
I'll say yes.
Okay, that's six zero one, six with an asterisk, oh, one.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience with us, Steve. It was a really good conversation.
Sure. It's not the last one we'll have. I'm sure there'll be plenty more.
Thank you for making the initiative and pushing this forward. And I understand everyone's apprehension as well. I, the.
Well, what is mine, Mike? Mike, what do you think mine is?
And we're not, I'm not going to go into, I'm, I'm not going into that.
I mean, you know, you know, you know, it's, hold on, Fran, Fran, with all due respect, with all due respect, Fran, with all due respect, we don't talk about these items off the record. So even though we had this information, we hadn't had a chance to discuss it amongst ourselves because we don't have side conversations. So just allow that sometimes. Sometimes just allow a couple of extra words. That's all. I'm done talking.
Steve, I, I don't know where we are. I mean, we don't allow, we don't, we cannot talk about these things off the record, right? We can, we all know what the regulations are. So.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm hoping that everybody has on their calendar that training or that refresher for everybody as to what we can and cannot do, okay? Because I, I, I feel we have a lot of emotion, all of us, of different things. But and I feel that sometimes we're going out in things that we care about, but they're not in our purview. Okay, so. I'll leave it.
Well, I'll help you with that. Well, I can help you with that. Whenever, whenever you mention all of us with emotions, I don't have no emotion on this.
So I say, I'm saying in general, we all have different topics, different topics that we have emotions for, okay? So let me clarify. Okay. If you guys saw my note, I'm sorry if I sent you the late note. I was overwhelmed by the minutes and I have some changes to it. So what I like to propose and Steve Kleppen, I don't know, here we go again. If we have, I have some edits of things and I started looking, I don't know if everybody's read. It was a lot of things to read through and remember, whatever it is. So if I like to ask you to, any edits, which I'll be doing, I'll be sending them to Steve, Brian. Please, so please read them. So we have more time. Send your edits in if there's any edits. So the next, our next meeting, it'll be an easier task to go through all of these minutes and take it from there. Okay?
Just, yeah, I think if you have edits, you can send them to me. We'll incorporate them and then we can recirculate the document out again and you can just vote on the revised document.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, comments of directors. Do you want to tell us about the new staff, the staffing that you have or what's going on?
Yeah, so we, we have probably three new staff you haven't met yet. They've been here maybe five weeks max for the earliest one. So we, we're trying to get caught up. Trying to get caught up. Um. Laura, who I mentioned is a new senior planner, so you'll probably bounce into her. Uh, we also hired Jasmine Peel and Joshua Nogarita. That work kind of um front counter staff, so they're doing permitting. Right now they're getting just absolutely buried. We're averaging fifteen new permits received a day. Which is just an insane number, and we're just struggling to keep up. It's just too much volume right now. I, I think it's a lot of. Something it COVID. COVID related people home so much more now that they're seeing projects around the house that they want to get done. Um influx of uh new residents from New York and other places, so it's just been a huge volume of permits coming in.
So I, I think if.
And their titles, could you email around the, the new names and titles of the people? So if we need to reach somebody, we send it to the appropriate person?
Yeah, yeah, no, sure.
Thank you. I like for your next meeting, our, our next meeting. Can they just uh show up and say hello via Zoom?
As, as long as I don't run afoul of um union rules, because there's, believe it or not, there is a union rule. That if they show up for a night meeting, it's three hours of overtime, so I don't want to pay. As being cheap, I don't want to pay everybody three hours overtime to.
Then whatever, then whatever you're gonna, listen, your dog or your cats are attacking behind you, so.
Give us a photograph of them, Steve, you could.
I will see if I can um coerce them into volunteering five minutes of their time to say hello at the next meeting.
Yeah, tell them it's to their benefit if we know what they look like, so. Uh, otherwise, send us a picture with their title and um, you know, contact info, so we know who they are.
Okay, I'm sure they'll be, they're all. They all work really hard and they all like. Like when COVID was first hitting, when I told them they can't come to the office, they were all mad, so they're all, it's, it's a really good.
Go ahead, go ahead, Brian.
Steve, the other thing is they could take just a two-minute um selfie of themselves, a video. Bingo. Um, they're, they're very good at it. We look at it, the evening, we see them real time in a sense. But a photograph will also do photograph with name.
I will, I, I, I think if I was them, I'd rather do like just pop on and say hello, I'm person X. Here's my, if I put a video out there, that's forever.
That's true, that's true. Hey, Steve, how's your, how's your department um? Managing through, are, are you doing appointments? Are you um, things haven't changed with City Hall, right? But how is planning and zoning? Handling, are you having people come in with appointments or? How's it going?
Yeah, so we um. We do some things on appointment, like sometimes people want to look at files and it's just impossible to. Scan um. Hundreds and hundreds of pages of, of files. It's easier for them to come in and we put them in the conference room to look at it, but that's by appointment. Most of the time, we're doing stuff through email and then we'll do a lot of, we do a lot of Zoom. For like applications, so you can share the screen and look at what they're talking about, so it, it's functions.
Okay. Uh, any, anything else you want to update us on, on new projects or whatever?
Yeah, so just a couple of things. So I sent around a flyer. For the industrial zones meeting, which is. On April twenty-ninth, so I'll probably send out another reminder as we get closer to that. Um, and this hopefully doesn't spur a whole long conversation, but. Picking up on a couple of the themes you talked about, like what, what the planning commission's role is. Um, and this is another recommendation in the citywide plan. I do think. The city should seriously look at revisiting, combining the planning and zoning commission. Because I think there's a lot of. Based on your workload and the items that you receive, I mean. You know, planning commissions, like one of their initial functions was really looking at subdivision applications, and we get so few of those now. Um, you, you really don't get that many eight twenty-four referrals are pretty basic kind of in concept. And then, so you get a lot of referrals from the zoning commission, so there, there's already one city body looking at it, and I think it would. Expedite things for applicants and probably steam streamline processes if it was a combined commission. Obviously, the capital budget would require. Like a separate thought, maybe there'd be a subcommittee looking at the capital budget, because that's, you know, that's three or four time consuming nights. Um, but I think it's something the city needs to take a really close look at.
So who's looking at it? You said a separate entity is looking at it.
Uh, it, I think if somebody would have to, it would probably be, you know. It, it's in the charter, so I imagine that has to go through council and, you know. I'm not sure who, who's the person that kicks it off. It's the mayor or whomever, but somebody needs to. To, you know, start talking about it a little bit.
No, I, I, I'm sorry. I thought you said that another, that a body is uh, is looking at it, so I miss.
No, should. I mean, a couple of people ask me on occasion, council members ask me sometimes, you know. Can, it's, it's some of the same issues that they see in here that, you know, we're looking at a lot of the same. Same applications are going to both commissions, and that seems kind of like, oh, you know, if, if you're a developer, for example, and I've got to come. For a regulation amendment for my project and I've got to go to Commission A and I have to bring my whole staff and all my consultants, that's expensive for them to do that. It's, you know, that, we're talking about a, a ten thousand dollar fee for affordable housing, and I bet you the fee to bring. All your development team to a project runs well over ten thousand dollars, so. So those, those kind of things could be cost savings on the backend for somebody as well.
But Steve, it sounds like you're taking a lot of authority and power away from the planning commission. And basically putting the power with the zoning commission, especially if you're taking away, I think. One of the more important functions the planning commission has. Is the going over the capital budget, and you're saying that that would go to another subcommittee?
That would go, so you'd have a combined planning and zoning commission, which a lot of communities have, it would. So the planning and zoning commission would assume the functions of the planning commission and their zoning commission's function.
So it would be one commission?
Correct, yeah.
One group.
If, if it was me and they were asking me, I would say you'd have to boost the number of members on the zoning commission. Because there's, there, there's seven, seven seated, two alternates, so they'd probably bump it up several members. So you have a larger commission.
This would be your recommendation to the council, to the city?
Yeah, and that's in the citywide plan too as a recommendation. It used to be that way and it was broken apart. Uh, at one point in the past, but I think it makes sense to me to streamline it.
It seems that that might be more in the interest of the developer instead of the community.
Uh, no, I think it's in both. I think it's in the best interest of both, both groups.
So Steve, are you um? I don't know if it's, are you looking at that to bring it to council or we're just talking right now?
Talking, yeah, it's, it's not, nothing pending. There's nothing on the um short-term horizon for that.
Why not, Steve? Why not, Steve? It seems to make a good re. It's good, good thing, good plan to work through and see what the pluses and minuses are. It's done many, many, many other places.
I, I, there are consultants that uh consult to municipalities to look. At our particular situation. And give us a report. On the pros and cons. Of doing that. Uh, that's what I would like to see, a totally. Uh, objective review of our responsibilities. From an outside source. Uh, to, to look at this because, you know, the volunteer time alone is going to double. If not triple, I mean, when you think about all of that and do you have, are volunteers going to be? Coming forward who have that kind of time. That truly represent our, our community.
Uh, I don't think your meetings would increase. I mean, I think the only big increase would be. Um, capital budgets, because that's something brand new. But the applications, like if, if you added, I, and I've looked at the numbers. The subdivision applications and the eight twenty fours into the workload of the zoning commission. I don't think it adds any meetings on that agenda, so the capital budget would. Definitely add uh more time, but I think that you could have a subcommittee of. Folks that were really interested in the capital budget process kind of. Spearhead that, and that, that, that is definitely workload.
Well, there must be best practices out there for cities our size. You know, that, that's how I'm looking at it is. Uh. How do we compare in, you know, across the country in terms of uh? Our, how our commissions are set up and uh. What is, is it normal for a city our size to have a combined planning and zoning commission, basically is what I'm asking?
I would support an independent assessment. To look at different communities and then to come back and, and see whether we would also need to uh have a joint. Planning and zoning committee, commission.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think we have any say in that though. So as, like Steve said, it's um either common council brings it up or. Or initiates, or the mayor. It's not up to us to say, let's do a study if um it makes sense to combine.
Addressed in the P O C D with um. Clarissa, I'm sorry, forgetting her name. Um, didn't they talk about that?
Yeah, it, it's actually a recommendation to combine the commissions.
Yeah, it was in the P O C D, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's already been somewhat addressed or looked at. I don't know in what detail, but it was already discussed.
Yep, I have a visual in my mind of that page for some reason.
Yeah.
Anyway, anything else, Steve?
No, um, probably only a change since the last um time we met was the consultant. Sorry, excuse me, TPU DC, which is a firm in Nashville. Is sign the contract to update the zoning regulations, so they're right now, we're just dumping data on them. So they'll be doing that over the next month, working on a communications plan. And then I think in the summer, they'll have the kind of. The initiation meeting and then mid-September, we're looking at having a larger um public process where they start really. Getting ideas and input.
We give any, when you tell me they're from what, Tennessee? What did you just say? They're from?
Tennessee, yeah.
Tennessee. Do we look more favorably to, or any favorably, whatever, to a local firm, many northeast, so now you got to pay them. To come in from Tennessee, right?
Yeah, so we interviewed um. One of the firms was partially Connecticut-based. Another firm that bid, but then somehow didn't submit hard copies was a Connecticut firm. And I forgot where the um. The fourth firm was from, but yeah, we did consider them and it was pretty close between the two firms. It was just. The preference was that this firm. That, that what stood out was the uh feedback we got regarding their uh public meeting presentations was really. Positive from the um. Um, references that we checked up on afterwards.
Okay, I'm, I'm always in favor of local, you know, Connecticut and stuff. Anyway, that's just my thought. Okay, any? And nothing else from you, Steve?
Nope.
All right, comments of commissioners? Anybody want to bring anything up?
I just have one question. We, you did say that there would be future opportunities. To look at not only affordable housing as a group or at, looking at the big picture of affordable housing. Would that have to be based on a resolution before us, or could we have a general discussion? About not only affordable housing, but what we as the planning commission see as a vision for Norwalk in the next ten years? Because so much. Yeah.
Yeah, you can have a conversation. I mean, it's better if you're going to make recommendations or any kind of, it's better to have it. On the agenda as something you want to discuss. Um. So yeah, I, I would say though, the only thing is we just went through the whole P O C D process, so. The kind of the ten-year vision is, is laid out, the specifics of. The Affordable Housing Plan, which is, is another recommendation within the citywide plan. Would have the specifics on the housing portion of. The, the affordable housing portion of options.
Now, Tamara was given a copy, right, of the P O C D?
Um, I don't know if we got her a hard copy or not. I mean, I know she's gotten the links to, but.
Looked at it on the um website.
Yeah, I mean, anybody wants a hard copy, we can.
Yeah, Steve, I, I. Uh, if Tamara, Tamara agrees, can you send her a hard copy?
I'm fine, I, I, I don't do paper. I'm, I'm fine with going on the link. I'm, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that.
Okay. I'm very good. Any, anybody else with comments?
Well, it might be a good idea if, if all of us reviewed that portion of the P O C D and then had a conversation at. Think, like any other department. That any volunteer in the city of Norwalk volunteers to be on. It is difficult to just stick with the task at hand, because I think we like to, to think of the city in total as a whole. And sometimes it is hard to strictly go by what we are tasked to do, and if you watch any other. Commission meetings like ours. You see that, you know, people struggle because they want to bring in what they think is the greater good for Norwalk, so. It might just be great if we could have a conversation like that outside of our domain, just as planning commission members.
On the record, it'll be on the record.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, the public. I was interested, I think, in what we have to say and why we have to say what we say. Might give them some perspective. We all come, you know, from slightly different points of view, but um it helps us make. These decisions that we have to make that are, they're not easy.
We're just speaking from, speaking from my experience, the commission has been very progressive and, and informed over the, over the years. Um. Uh, we are a great commission. Um, the way we communicate. Uh, has always been respectful. We respect each other's uh viewpoints and opinions. Uh, and uh, this has been um a. Good way of helping our greater Norwalk area. Um, when I first started until now, I seen a lot of. Uh transparency um and a lot of collaboration, which is great. Uh, it's been very progressive.
Yeah, I mean, I enjoy working with everybody and I think, I like to hear what other people have to say. Um, very much our other members, and I, I just think. Having conversation with these Zoom meetings. Is a lot harder than we were sitting, when we were sitting around the table, so to speak.
I like, I like where people are going and also just knowing, we've been asking a lot of questions about, you know. Information that Steve may be able to share with us so that we understand better. The nature of the problems, so I, it's, I think it's a really interesting idea and I would support.
Steve. You, Steve Kleppen, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, so uh. I'm, I'm in favor of having conversation. The only thing I want you to check on though, if you can. Is as we. Have a conversation, whatever it is, what are we bound on the um? You know, we'll express our opinions and stuff. Can somebody come back and say, well, you pre. You're prejudged in this, so it's like a um, we were warned, uh, I don't remember when, whatever attorney it was to. Not to um. Have conversations or whatever, that we will be prejudging. Something ahead of time before it came in front of us. I'm, I'm having a hard time explaining what I mean here, but.
Yes, you, you couldn't have a conversation about, like, if you knew you were going to get. Um. An, 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 an application or like say, so say somebody proposed an amendment to the regulations, not staff, it was. Developer X, they wanted to amend the regulations. It wouldn't be a good idea to talk about that. Before it was submitted to, so you're, you know, you're kind of pre, prejudging the, the application before it came in front of you. But if you're having a conversation about a topic about affordable housing in Norwalk. That's, you know, you're not making policy decisions, you're not voting on a specific item, you're just discussing. Aspects of the, of, of the concept and what the needs are, so that, that you're allowed to have kind of free-form conversations about that. You just have to remember that if you're going to be taking a vote on something, you have to um. Make sure that that's kind of that conversation is in that silo.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything else to add for the? Greater good, greater good of the group? All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Who's going to second?
Thank you, dude.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Be well.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, bye Diane.
Bye Diane.